Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City of Shelton Commission Meeting. And what we have is an agenda, and the first thing on the agenda, it looks like a sizable crowd to recognize Shelby Conklin for 37 years of service with the Shelton Municipal Court. And so at this time, we are going to be presented a presentation by the Honorable Judge George Steele. Welcome. I think, unless he wants to delegate it to somebody else.
Shelby, I think you probably should get up here. It's about time.
Thank you.
As you know, Shelby has chosen to desert us in our hour of duty after 37 years. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, George. It's been an honor.
What does the sign say? Um, oh, yeah. Okay, Vicky can read it.
Congratulations to Shelby Conklin for your 37 years of service. Enjoy your retirement. You will be missed from the municipal court desk.
As I said, this is a...
Shelby, want to say something?
I was going to say one thing first.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was going to say again, I said it before, when I started this position, it was a very easy job to step into, and this is one of the reasons why.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you all. Thank you very much, Shelby, for your service. All right, next is our weekly commission reports. Commissioner Moore?
Yes. Tomorrow evening, I'm going to be attending a course called Economics for Everyone: Understanding and Fighting Gentrification, Olympia and Beyond. And it's, I think it'll be very interesting to see how Olympia is doing with building and pricing people out of neighborhoods. And so that's what it is, is a recognition of how we can work to avoid that as we're looking at more growth and development in our city. So I'm excited about that. Then on Friday, I have a Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization meeting in Bremerton, and that is with the state DOT and different entities around talking about granting and funding opportunities to do with transportation. And that's it.
All right. Commissioner Dowell?
I have several meetings this week with citizens. I had one this morning, a productive one this morning. Wednesday, I have a kind of emergency board meeting real quick to discuss some issues. And Thursday is the chamber lunch at 11:30, and Friday is the celebration for Shelby. End of my week.
Thank you very much. Tomorrow, I will be having my weekly staff briefing with our city manager. In the afternoon, I will be attending a MaceCom board meeting. On Wednesday, I will be attending my criminal justice board meeting in the morning and attending an economic development open house meeting down at their office. Thursday, I will also be attending the Chamber Real Estate and Economic Update event. And on Friday, I was planning to go to Shelby's retirement party. So that completes our weekly commission reports. And at this time, we have an opportunity for general public comment.
We have no one signed up at this time.
Okay. Mark, did you want to do a public comment? I was just kidding. You have to sign up if you do. All right. We're going to start down the business agenda trail. And at this point, we're going to turn the meeting over to our Public Works Director, Craig Gregory, about an equipment purchase.
Thanks, Mayor and Commissioners. We are looking at purchasing some odor scrubber media for the odor scrubbers at not only the main plant, but also Front Street Lift Station. And we did go out for a formal bid earlier last month and got back three bids. Pure Air was the lowest bidder at $43,165. And we are proposing to move forward with that purchase with them and a contract to provide that service. This is taken out of the general operations budget for the wastewater treatment plan. So it is something that was originally budgeted for 2017.
Questions, comments?
It just doesn't seem very glamorous.
It is not very glamorous, but it is certainly needed to keep our air clean and certainly odor free, so.
Especially for the residents around that area.
Certainly. We do get a few complaints down there, and that media is fairly old. It's been in there since the plant originally opened, so hopefully this will help us out down there.
So you go with this, and then how long after you say, yes, we want this? Or the commission says, yes, go forward?
Shouldn't be more than a couple of weeks for them to get us the material and replace that.
And who replaces it? You or?
Staff will be replacing it.
Staff, okay. All right.
Any other questions or comments for Craig about the odor scrubber?
No.
Okay, so it appears that we concur to place this vendor award for the air, Pure Air Filter replacement replacement media on the action agenda for November 20th, 2017. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next is discussion about a budget amendment by Nola.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We have, the city has experienced a lot of change during 2017, including staff reconfigurations, additions, reallocations, contracted out solid waste services, we've had some adjustments to our jail contract. So there's been a lot of movement around during the year and those individual decisions you've dealt with throughout the year. So this document is a proposed amended budget, and I'll go through it. And what I'll be requesting is that you place this on your action agenda for next Monday, November 20th. And I will just go through briefly and touch on a couple of line items as you're looking through the document. If you go to the first page there, the general fund, you'll see the 2016 actuals, you'll see 2017 original budget, the 2017 amendment amount, if there is one. And there's a note reference to connect that to the notes on the following page, and then what the total 2017 amended budget amount would be. So just as an example, when you look at your beginning cash, the actual beginning cash was, if you go to the bottom of 2016 column, you'll see it down there, total ending cash was $2,444,752. And that should carry forward as our beginning balance in the general fund for 2017. So the amendment here is simply to adjust the beginning balance.
Page are you on?
On page two, right after the cover page.
Page two. Oh, I got it.
There you go. So for example, the $210,000 amount is simply the difference between what was originally budgeted for beginning cash and what was actually, our actual beginning cash. So that's how those adjustment items are, all those amendment items are listed. And the R refers to revenue, and the E refers to expenditures. And in this case, the 001 refers to our general fund, which has a state auditor ruled number of 001. So as you go down through there, there's a list of all of the amendment items. And on this, it's actually on page three, you'll see the corresponding notes that refer to those amendment items. So before I go any further, let me stop and make sure you understand how those pages correlate together. Can I answer questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay? Okay. If we don't have any questions on general fund, I'll just go through the funds and answer questions as we go. For the tourism fund, the only change there is adjusting the beginning cash and also that they're...
Could I go back just a second?
Certainly.
So I have some questions about the expenditures.
Okay.
Is that the time that we're asking for those questions?
Sure.
Okay, so on E1 is a economic development support. And I saw somewhere in here, but I actually saw it in this. Does this have anything to do with what we're talking about? This is futuristic.
That is a potential list of items that we'll request from state appropriations.
Okay, so thank you for that clarification. So we're just looking in here under this for that we have a retail economic development support, and that's what we're looking, that was already, is this new, or did we already purchase the study, or, see, I'm trying to find out on the E list here.
Yeah, you've already, you've already approved these things, the retail study and the economic development support.
So all of these E items, they're already been approved by us for this year's budget?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure. So going to the tourism fund on page four, the only adjustment there is adjusting the beginning cash and also the $30,000 for the youth baseball world series that you had approved earlier in the year. On the bond fund, the only adjustment is adjusting beginning cash. Same thing for the capital improvements fund, we're just adjusting beginning cash. Same thing for water fund, again, just adjusting the beginning balance. And for the sewer fund, same thing. When we get into the solid waste fund, obviously with the sale of the contracting out of the solid waste services, there's been some activity there. Before I explain solid waste, did you have any questions about any of the prior funds so far? No?
No.
Okay. So on solid waste, you'll see an adjustment to beginning cash. And then you will also see a reduction of revenue because of the contracting out of the solid waste services. And then down on the expenditure half of the page, you'll see adjustments there that are related to contracting out the service. Specifically, the $906,000 inter-fund transfer is moving some of the $729,000 plus some more. The $729,000 for a total sale of capital assets was for the trucks and all of the equipment related to solid waste services. And then we took that plus some more money, and we transferred it to the general fund. $710,000 was from the sale of the assets. And then there was an additional transfer of $196,000. And that was to reimburse the general fund for a refund that we paid to WashDOT for the historic site entry way improvement grant. We gave the grant money back. So $196,000 of that 906 is to reimburse the general fund for that grant refund. And then the rest of these are just adjustments based on contracting out those services to Mason County garbage. Questions on solid waste?
So I guess what I would say is if we were looking at, we transferred money into the general fund, 196 of it was to repay for that grant.
Correct.
But we're, so we're still looking at another half a million dollars, and you're going to explain what we're going to do with that money?
The $710,000 is from the sale of the solid waste assets, and those, when we sold those assets, we transferred that money into the general fund.
Right, and out of that money, then, $200,000 of it went to pay for that grant?
The $906,000 is comprised of $710,000 from the sale of the assets and $196,000 that we transferred to the general fund.
Oh, okay, so that's all income. I mean, that's money that we got. I guess I'm confused on, between the 710 and the 960. So we...
We collected a total of $729,000 this year for the sale of assets.
Okay, I got that one.
Right.
So that's money we got, extra money into the...
Right. And what we transferred from the solid waste fund to the general fund was a total of $906,000. And some of that was residual balance in the solid waste fund. We're still leaving some money in the solid waste fund.
So we haven't got to the discussion on where that money is going to go? That's, because we got that into the general fund.
We got, we got, are you talking about the money from solid waste into the general fund?
Yes.
Yeah, that was transferred.
We haven't talked about where we're going to spend it. That's further along?
Well, that's, if you go back to the general fund, you'll see that's accounted for in the top half of the page under revenue. You'll see that, if you go to page two, and the last item on the revenue section, you'll see it says total inter-fund transfer, sale of fixed assets revenue, you'll see $906,000 there on the revenue side. And then everything you see down below that encompasses all of the budget amendments.
Okay, so I can see here that it looks like, what I'm trying to find is where that 900, what would that was spent on? What we decided to use that money for, is extra money?
Oh, this list?
This whole list? Well, it looks like it's the same numbers going across, unless I'm missing something.
Yeah, part of it is in the, the 196,000 is embedded into the $245,000 adjustment on streets.
That's clear.
When we, when we wrote the check back to WashDOT, that posted against the streets account. That's why that number is $245,000. So 196,000 of the 245 amendment in streets is the grant refund.
So I guess, sometimes I get confused by kind of a lot of terms and stuff. We took in some money from the sale of an asset.
Right.
We have the money. I'm just asking where the 500,000, where we chose to put that 500,000?
Right, now it's in the general fund.
Have we not made a decision? I thought I saw something, where, recommendation on where that would go?
Well, most of those issues are dealt with here. The way the, the way the budget amendment is designed is you look at what was in your original budget, and if you're running over...
Which we are, right? I mean, we're going to have more money.
We're not necessarily running over on our original budget on all of the departments. Some of the departments are under budget, some of them are running over budget based on some decisions that have made, that made for the year.
So we're not making a decision, we're not making a decision on the, if there is an extra 500, because there may not be, that may be absorbed. Would that be a way to put that?
That could be one way of saying it.
Okay, okay. This is just, you're just projecting, we have not...
This is the, yeah, this is the net impact of transferring money from solid waste into the general fund, the general fund paying, the refund of the grant money, looking at all of the departmental year-to-date expenditures, looking at what we have budgeted for each department, and determining what departments might need a budget amendment in order to remain under budget by the end of the year.
Thank you.
Does that help?
That helps me a lot, thank you.
Nola, I had a question related to this. So the 196,000 grant refund, is that only for the park, or is that for the park and ride as well?
I don't know. I think it was for the...
It's about, so that's like half of what we were afraid it would be, is that right?
That's correct. We reported on, we brought that back to you.
We got some very good news. Craig worked with local programs, and they were very kind to us in closing out half of that grant project, so one of the two grants over there, which essentially cut our costs in half.
They essentially gave us credit for creating a gravel parking lot out in that park and ride area and counted all of the expenditures that we had for creating that gravel parking lot instead of the original concept that we had.
Okay, that's good news. So the money that we, the money that we spent on that was credited to the grant, so we didn't have to pay it back. Okay.
Saved about $200,000.
Yeah, I was, I was just surprised, and I'm sure you briefed in it, it didn't make sense to me until I saw this.
So I did see a couple of numbers that it looks like that where there's an addition here, so now I'm understanding it a little bit better. So in the total capital expenditures, it looks like from your original budget to the amended budget, from $32,000 up to $93,000.
That is correct.
Okay.
And then on your notes, it explains what that was for.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Okay, let's see, which fund did we leave off with? We've got through capital, we've got through water, sewer, solid waste, let's see, what else? Storm drainage fund. The only change to storm drainage fund, or this is on page 11, is adjusted the beginning balance, beginning cash. And also, we refunded $64,000 to WashDOT for the downtown creek sidewalk grant. So you'll see that listed there as an, as an expenditure. And payroll fund is generally just a money in and money out fund, except for we did have some more unemployment claims, so you'll see an additional $35,000 listed for the payroll benefits fund to cover unemployment claims. And the E, M, and R, the only change there is adjusting beginning cash. Environment's pension, the only change is adjusting beginning cash. And library endowment, the only change is adjusting beginning cash. Questions? Any other questions? If you don't have any.
I do, I have a question.
Yes.
I don't know if anyone can remember this, but hadn't we talked about the 710,000 that we were beginning from the sale of equipment? Would, we talked about putting that into a direct fund for C Street cleanup?
As a matter of fact, we're going to be holding a chunk of money in the solid waste fund for that purpose.
Do you know how big that chunk is going to be?
Well, right now, it's, let me go look at it. Because it's in there.
Tell me the page.
Go to page nine. And with this, keep in mind, we never know precisely what ending cash is going to be, we're projecting. But at this point, with this plan, with this amended budget, as you see here, we're estimating that we will end the year with about $358,000 in the solid waste fund. And most of that, we're planning on setting aside for C Street.
Why wasn't that whole amount put in there?
What whole amount?
The whole 710,000.
It was originally placed in that fund, and then we moved it to the general fund to pay for some one-time expenditures, which are items you've already looked at throughout the year. And those are incorporated into the general fund amended budget.
All right.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Any other questions? Then I would request that the commission place the proposed 2017 amended budget on your action agenda for next Monday, November 20th.
Okay, so it appears that we concur, and we will place this amended budget item on our action agenda for exactly what you said, November 20th, 2017. Thank you, Nola.
You're welcome.
All right, next, we'll turn the meeting over to our city manager about a fee schedule.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We've touched on this last few weeks, and this week, we're bringing forward a comprehensive draft at some fee schedule changes. So you have most of the folks, I think, save for Darren, that has one change in here. But what you have in front of you is a list of multiple changes, including, we put in what you voted for with the permit fees, just so there's a reminder of option aid is inside this. It's not a straight dollar figure amount, it's by evaluation, so it's a little difficult to pull out. But we included the option aid that you voted on a couple months ago. In addition to that, you see changes from throughout these departments. So if we have questions now, we can take them, otherwise, we can give you some time to take a look, if you need another week or so. And we tried to include notes for the changes whenever possible, if they weren't just removing things. But if there are any questions, we can answer those now.
Okay, I'm just looking at this, so I just want to always stay cognizant of the fact that this, this is still quite a bit less than what we were pulling in in 2015. So if we are fortunate enough to get, just as around number 20 houses of this valuation, we would be not, not collecting about $140,000 in fees for the 20 houses. Is that correct?
If we're just doing a straight 20 times the two options, that number would be correct.
Yeah, okay, so I just, as we were looking at these things we're going to be talking about within the next few weeks, as far as the things that we've identified are important, I just want us to stay cognizant of the fact that we may not be able to do some of these things. And that's it. That's my only comment.
Looks good to me. We voted for option A, and that seems to be reflected in these numbers.
Yeah, option A is already there, so really what you're seeing new are all the red highlights that have changed throughout. So if you have questions now, or if you want to take a look, and we can discuss it at next week's meeting if you'd like, all those, those changes have either a highlight or a comment when necessary for explanation.
Well, I think if you're not in a rush, and because this is the first we've had an opportunity to look at this, the highlighted areas, maybe we can go ahead and postpone deciding on this for one week?
Absolutely.
What do my fellow commissioners think about that?
That's fine.
One more week to look at it?
I think that, yeah, I would like to look at this for another week, because there are quite a few changes in here.
I appreciate the highlighted, the highlighted makes your eyes uncomfortable. All right, so it appears that we concur to go ahead and give more feedback, give this one more week to take a look at this fee schedule, at the highlighted areas, and make our decision at that time. All right, next, is that we concur to do that? Looks like we do. Next is Mark Ziegler, who's going to talk to us about some art.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Once again, bringing to you the recommendations from the Shelton Arts Commission for the Civic Center Rotating Art Gallery. The city advertised for submittals from artists with a deadline of November 3rd, 2017. Arts Commission met on November 7th to jury the works of three artists that submitted their pieces, 15 total pieces. I've got two artists present to you today. I believe there's copies of the work in your packets. Teresa Marie Stahl Cowley and Helma Josol. Four pieces each, which are being recommended for the rotating art gallery, excuse me. With your approval, we'd like to bring this back and place it on the action agenda for next week, and the Arts Commission will install on November 21st with your approval.
I think these are beautiful.
These pictures, these pages don't do them justice. We're anxious to see them hanging on the wall.
So it appears that we concur, that this is a nice example of art to be displayed in our facility, and that we will place this recommendation on the November 20th, 2017 city commission meeting agenda, action agenda. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, we're going to go into administration reports, and the first is Assistant City Manager Vicky Yop.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. A little bit about the administration. I just wanted to remind everybody that we do have an open house retirement for Shelby on Friday afternoon from 2:30 to 4:30, and we're inviting members of the public to attend that, too.
It will be here?
It will be here, in probably this room that we're sitting in right now. The HR department is also preparing for civil service testing for patrol officers. And so what that means is we have a public safety test that we, that is administered by a third party. But we also have an interview panel of individuals from the community. One will be a public safety expert in the field of law enforcement. There will be a crime victim's advocate and also a concerned citizen that will be sitting on that panel, and will be scoring that oral board along with the public safety test, and then certifying names for the chief as positions come open. We also have advertised a confidential support assistant, and that is open through next Monday, I believe, is the, kind of the first date for screening of the applications. And that opening is because our assistant upstairs has taken the position in the court, and so she will be working down there with the judge's staff in the municipal court area. So she was excited to... So, she was excited to take that position, and now we have one open. And I'm in negotiations with three of our groups, that Customer Service, Finance, and the Public Police Department unions. I'm in negotiations with them, will be meeting with all of them this week, and I'm hopeful that we can get those contracts wrapped up and approved, and I'll be bringing them to you, I hope, in the near future. So, that's kind of some of the things we've been working on. If you have any questions?
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you very much. Next will be the Financial Department.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We've been busy in finance. The 2015 financial audit and the 2015 and '16 accountability audit is complete, and other than a fraud letter related to the former finance director's actions, the auditors, just an FYI on the fraud letter, the things that the auditor recommended that we do, we did that in the spring. Within a month of discovering it, we had addressed those issues, basically by implementing some additional internal controls. That was part of the positive pay, direct deposit, some of those things. So, we've checked all the boxes for the auditor on that issue, and they're happy with it. And other than just a few minor exit item recommendations, we do in fact have a clean audit with no findings, no management letter, so that's good. As far as business license renewals, the staff has been working on, looking for ways to streamline that whole process of sending, printing and sending out the business license renewals. We used to have a, an old printer that had to use that paper with the little holes on each side, and carbon copies, and, oh, anybody who owns a business in town can tell you how frustrated.
You gotta churn it by the crank on the air.
Yeah, pretty much.
And it got clogged.
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah.
And so, we, we, the staff has worked to come up with a better way of doing that. So, we're sending out the business license renewal notices later this week, and it's much simpler, much easier, and hopefully the process for business owners also will be a little bit easier in getting their license renewals in, and getting their, getting their updated business licenses. On the banking and account reconciliations, Elaine Merka has been working to get all of our accounts nice and clean, and she now has everything reconciled all the way through September of this year, and she's right now putting the finishing touches on October, which means we will be able to actually generate finance reports for you, pretty much up to date now. We have a tentative launch date for EnterGov, which is the licensing tool that should help hopefully with permits and some of those things. We're, we're looking at early December for that. And as far as budget amendments, you saw those today. We're looking for approval on that next week. We are on track with our 2018 budget and levy process. We have the levy information all calculated. You saw that last week, and that will be coming back to you next week for final hearings and for adoption of the levy ordinance and the levy certification. So, that is, pretty much that work's all done, and we're just ready to go ahead and approve it and send it in. This week, I'll be working with a leadership team, going through all of the 2018 budget proposals, and based on the priorities that you've given us in your budget retreat, we will be fine-tuning that budget down so that it's gonna be a balanced budget when we bring it back to you. We right now have the final budget hearing scheduled for next Monday, and we're targeting early December for final budget approval, so we are on track with that. Any questions?
So, the, on the final budget, we had that kind of like, I guess you call it the wish list, which was like about $6 million over the, and so we're gonna cut back on the $6 million?
Well, the initial document that we brought to you had all of the wish list in it, and what we'll be doing now is, based on your priorities, going through that wish list and paring that down to, to, based on those priorities, what can we do?
Yeah.
So, that's what we'll be bringing back to you later.
Another thing I was, what I was gonna say is that I think that's a real good idea to get up on the business renewal licenses, and then the follow-ups and things to make it, not wasting a lot of staff time. Sometimes we have a method that we're just so used to, we do it over and over, and like, hey gee, did you call Bob? How come he didn't do his, oh, I'll get that, you know, and so getting it a little bit better, so it's, you know, I think that's a really good thing.
We've been spending a lot of time this year looking at, how do we do this, and why do we do it this way, and is there an easier, faster, more efficient, better way to do it? And we've been changing a lot of our internal processes in order to improve efficiencies, and it seems to be giving us some good results.
Sounds good. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Craig Gregory.
Thanks, Mayor and Commissioners. As the three of you voted on last week to change the solid waste utility tax, you will see that reflected in the customer bill coming from Mason County Garbage, 1st of December. So, we just wanted to let everybody know that that will be taking effect, and you will see those updated bills with that clarified rate structure within it. Met with the school district and Mason Transportation Authority to discuss snow routes and emergency weight restrictions. We had some issues last year with how the buses got around, and how we fed up into certain communities or areas within town. And I think we've come to a fairly decent solution to those. We added a few roadways to the authorized travel area that would feed up into the Angleside area with Turner Street and up into 16th, and also Wyoming into Meridian Park. So, those were the two places of concern that both MTA and the school district had as far as servicing those areas, they just couldn't get to them. And it's a problem with those kids needing to get picked up. They were having to go down to Neyland Park to get picked up, so that's quite a, quite a walk, or quite a journey from 16th all the way down to there.
It is.
Wow.
We found a way to improve how they get picked up, I think, at this point. So, we will be changing our snow route maps and our weight restriction maps to reflect that, and they will be posted. The snow maps are already posted on our website, weight restriction maps also will be. Between November 27 and December 11, quite a few partners will be coming into the wastewater treatment plant down on Fairmont to do a study of our operations down there with the recent issues that the shellfish growers have had in Hammersley Inlet, the Department of Health, Department of Ecology, US FDA, Washington State Fish and Wildlife, and also the Squawson Island Tribe will be down there during that time period, looking at our processes, how we do things. They're also gonna be doing some monitoring within Hammersley Inlet of how that water moves, so they'll be doing some testing out there in how that water just fluctuates back and forth, and, and take a look at that. So, there'll be a lot of traffic in and out of the wastewater treatment plant, but hopefully they can give us some direction of, right now, we're meeting all the requirements of the discharge permit, but really it's a recommendation of, could we do anything better? What processes could we go through to make it a more efficient discharge into Hammersley Inlet? So, they will be taking a look at that, and we will get a report back probably sometime around the first of the year after they conclude that study. Few updates on the projects. Basin 3 is close to being completed for design. We did get it back from Parametrics. There are still a few tweaks that we found in an initial review that we had of those finalized plans, so we will be shipping those back to Parametrics to finish those up and get an engineer's estimate also when they are complete. So, that should be in the next couple of weeks completed, and moving forward on that. Downtown Connector Project, we should have 50% design back in the next couple of weeks. They said most likely by the end of November, and then we will find out for funding whether we were awarded a grant on Friday of this week. So, we'll keep our fingers crossed for not only the Downtown Connector Project, but also the $500,000 we asked for Turner Avenue. C Street landfill, just wanted to give you a quick update. I don't know if the three of you have seen these. These are the progress reports that we send to Department of Ecology. We give them quarterly updates of progress out in the field of what is actually being done, and if you look down through this, you can see we've done in the third quarter of 2017 some surface water sampling, and also some topographical and boundary surveys that were completed in August. And then in the fourth quarter, we will be doing some groundwater monitoring wells that should start being drilled sometime around early to mid-December. So, we are continuing to move forward, and this information is out on the table out in front, and also posted on the city website. So, everybody's got access to what we are doing out there on C Street. Operations-wise, the Water Department's out doing some valve turning in the Hillcrest area, exercising water valves out in the field. The Street Department is doing some tree trimming. You will see them on South Seventh, or South Second Street in the Delaware area, and moving to Pioneer Way, Turner, and also down by the wastewater treatment plant at the end of Fairmont. They've got some low-hanging trees and, and just trimming those right away. So, if you see them out there, you know what they do, so try to avoid those areas if at all possible. The Storm Department has finished up their major cleaning of catch basins, and also the downtown, downspout drains that come off of the buildings that run under our sidewalks. I'm not sure they've ever been cleaned. They've never been cleaned in the 24 years I've been here. We did get a few complaints of business owners, so we got out and got those cleaned on Railroad Avenue and Coda. So, we were seeing quite a few overflowing drains, roof drains in those areas, so hopefully those should be functioning and back to the way they should be. And probably the best news that we have for you is our loan forgiveness for the Upper Mountain View Pressure Zone. Washington State Patrol, one of the requirements was, we got one of four wells off of their system and disconnected, and Washington State Patrol has moved forward with that, and they actually disconnected and started using water on October 30. So, they have disconnected their well, and they've just got a few reporting requirements to Department of Health at this point for a water facilities inventory check that they have to report, and then we'll move forward with actually getting that loan forgiveness. So, they were required to get disconnected by the end of the year, so they're about a month and a half ahead of schedule, so it's been, it's been really good to, to work with them and actually have a relationship with them again, and get them disconnected.
And that loan forgiveness is?
$2.25 million. And that is it, unless you have any questions.
Questions or comments?
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you very much. All right. Our city manager, do you have any further to the order?
Two things, Mayor and Commissioners. We handed you a preliminary list, so it's draft form of potential 2018 legislative priorities, and this is based off of what we got out of the, the big thing that we got out of our budget retreat, your four priorities. So, public safety, economic development. I'm gonna forget the third one for a second. The final, the fourth, fourth one is downtown business plan, but the third one is technology upgrades. So, what we're doing is, we're working with some folks that have some pretty lengthy experience with the state budgeting process, and trying to figure out from those four priorities, what is potentially, what's, what has the potential to get funded through the state budgeting process, and if some of these things don't fit there, what grant opportunities might be available for us. So, you have about 20 items in front of you, including some that don't fall into those specifically, but are just general infrastructure needs. So, we'll bring this back in a couple of weeks and actually brief on the items, but I would expect it to be pared down quite a bit, and then for whatever doesn't make the legislative parties, which will ask you to approve, then we'll go after grant money for those projects. But a lot of these projects are years down the road. Some of them we're working on now, we're just looking for the last bit of funding, but we wanted to keep you abreast of what we're doing with that. And then the second thing is, we're obviously in contact with the county. They called about the election on Thursday, and they also called today. We don't know about the specific commissioner race, but they did indicate to us that they want us to start looking at options for moving the ball forward on the council vote. They told us that they do not expect any change there from yes to no. So, we're gonna bring back some information next week. As we've mentioned before, we've only been working one step ahead, but now we need to do quite a bit of work to, to get ready, and just so that you're aware of the timeline they gave us this morning, they're looking to certify by the 28th of this month. And then we would need to bring forward a resolution before December 15 to put a ballot measure forward for a primary in February, and they would likely have a candidate filing session of three to five days sometime in mid-December, but that could obviously depend on when we get the resolution to them. So, we will bring that information, more of that information forward next week when we figure out what we're up against, and then also we will stay in contact with the county in figuring out what they need from us.
All right. Does that include your report?
I have, I have a question about that. So, at what point, because we will be looking at compensation for the council and doing whatever adjustments we need to do, and, and looking at, like cities, to determine what that is, and when does that happen? Because I would think we would need to have some of that information in place before we, before people will decide whether to run for office.
We talked about it a little bit, and I think that it's probably fair for people to know what they're running for. So, I, I think that one of the things that we're gonna do the rest of this week is figure out what the options are, whether or not it's you deciding, or if there's a salary commission that needs to be put together. We'll bring back information next week about what the options are to make that decision, but we will, we expect to bring back a fairly lengthy report next week as we start to dig into what work we have to do, but we'll certainly take a look at that.
It's historic.
It is.
All right. Any more questions or comments? So, at this point, we will complete, conclude this meeting and announce that our next meeting will be at October 20, 6:00 PM in the evening. This meeting, October 20.
October.
Why did I got October?
Because they put it in there.
Was it an accident? Somebody made a mistake? Somebody made a mistake? How hard could that be to believe? November 20, 6:00 PM in the evening, it's meeting adjourned.